Be careful to give your name to glory, your name to honor, and your name to praise. But in the precious name of your dear son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We got addition, we got a add resolution sixteen twenty-one. You know, we'd just like for your explanation.
Well, it designated representatives for the purpose of American Rescue.
We'll add that to do business as a part of your agenda. That being said, can I get an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minute, regular meeting, July twelfth. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
My reports bring one out. Somebody called my attention to it's the corner of Jefferson and Twenty-Fourth. And it looks like they've gone down that street with a bus stop. And they threw trash all in the street. And it's a week out and it's still out there. I don't, you know, it looks like they paved the road from maybe Washington. I wonder if they needed to get a foot in back there.
I would say.
But you know, it's, it, it, we probably don't hold the hard and fast on this. But if people contract to do a lot of yard work, they're supposed to tote that off. That's not supposed to be our expense.
That is true.
But my, my feeling is, is that if we could find out who did it, go over there and clean it up and bill them for it. You know, that, 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 I think that, that sent a message to them that maybe they wouldn't do that again.
You said that's Jefferson?
Jefferson and Twenty-Fourth was the corner. It's that corner. But it's at that side street. It's pretty obvious for you to go by there. And I was told it, I mean, this was like a week old. And a lot of that trash has kind of been blown, blown off and traffic shit. I don't know. I don't know if we call that a downtown celebration or whatever that was. And not being as, as good a representative for the city as I should be. That's the first one I've been to. I don't think my grandchildren have missed any of them. But that, it was, it was Friday a week ago and it was just, it was just so good. The atmosphere was good. People were there just had. I went there and I, I promised Stephanie I'd go, so I was gonna go. And I promised, promised my wife that we'd stay about fifteen minutes. I think we stayed a couple of hours. All my grandchildren were there and they were up on the, you know, up on the stage as it is. But dancing and it just was, I don't know how many people, you reckon? A couple hundred people that night?
Between two, three, four.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was just such a, such a nice event. And y'all done such a great job with that and I, I appreciate your efforts. Thought we might get a little COVID team update. We're, we're not in a good place. And it's, I hate to say it, it may be political sounding to some people, but I think it's a little self-inflicted. If you look at the statistics, Dillon County didn't do a real good job of getting vaccinated. And as a result, it's turned out that we were kind of a hotspot for this Delta variant. I think that I was, I was at something in Laurinburg Saturday and a minister there asked me, he says, show me the signs that the vaccines work. And so I pulled up on the internet, the curve, you know, the curve of cases. And it plummeted. And it did plummet. But then came the Delta variant, which isn't as variant maybe, but it is much more infectious. It's easier to spread. So those people who are not vaccinated, just, I mean, it just went crazy. If you've been vaccinated and you have antibodies, can you get it? Yes, you can. But it's probably going to be a cold or a sore throat. Can you give it to someone else? Yes, you can. Not as likely. You might have, you might even test positive and not infectious because your antibodies in your mouth and saliva attack that and break that to message your RNA virus love. So, you know, there's a lot of things out there that, that, that you hear. The biggest thing is, is that if you know people twenty-five and older, get a vaccine. If you're twenty-five and younger, it's, it's, it's not for you. For the person twenty-five and under, it's not as critical. But it's, you know, for your own health. But if we're gonna stop this and we had it, we had it dead, it's tracked. And then very careful. But that's, that's about all I've got to say. Glenn?
First and foremost, as you brought up earlier, I had the resolution sixteen twenty-one. I received an email today from the municipal association providing that we do this resolution that designates some from the city to be the representative and is all the correspondence with the state and the feds when it comes to the American Rescue Plan. Which if you remember, we're expecting to do three point one million dollars here in the next year. Hopefully our first half is coming to us in September. At least that's what I was told a month ago from the state. Whether that happens or not, I know they're meeting this week. The state is to determine how they're gonna do it. But on this resolution, I will be the person who signs all paperwork and Janet will be the contact person. She found on the state, you set up an account today. Account that's set up.
And that, just again, kind of explain, this is not a strong mayor council. This is Glenn runs the city and we collectively direct Glenn and Janet in their, in their functions. So it's appropriate for Glenn and Janet to be that, that person that they contact and the person that the ministry is.
Now with all that being said, as I mentioned before, the funds, initially the funds had to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. But now it's been extended to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. However, the monies have to be obligated to no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I spoke with Smith Brooks today, a hall director. I asked him if he would take the time to go through a certain period that the American Rescue Plan is asking for to see if we had any loss revenue. And in that, we talked before, based on what we've done in the last year, we don't think there's any. But in the American Rescue Plan, they have put in that law that there should be a four point one percent increase in your revenue during that time period.
During your time period after COVID?
Yes. So if, if we don't have that increase, then then we have that revenue lost. And he'll figure all that out for us and get back with us and we'll report. So then we can use some of that money for revenue loss purposes.
Burke had, I mean, his whole of, I mean, he didn't have anybody in there as mechanics or, you had, you had two down. You named guys down. How do you?
Well, it's, it's.
And what do you want to do during that?
Well, it's actually what we didn't receive as far as revenue.
Revenue, yeah.
And that can be from anything in the general fund to the wellness center to recreation, golf and water and sewer. All that'd be combined, hospitality.
The golf course, good bet.
It is. But it's based off of what we put into anybody up here in those time periods. The Smith have worked on that for us and hopefully in the next month or two, he'll have this for again. And then lastly, some good news as well, and I'll let Chief Bailey talk about this. Should be in your packet, ISO rating that we received about two months ago. There should be some information in that. Our ISO rating, for those of you that don't know what an ISO rating, that is what your insurance for homeowners and properties determine what your rate is as far as those coverages. And the lower the, the number means the better coverage we have as fire. So I'm gonna let Chief Bailey speak on that real quick.
They just came in on last year and they did a study for the city of Dillon. We were a four. The last study was done in two thousand sixteen. It goes on a points system base, same percentage of points come from fire, twenty percent comes from water and sewer, and ten percent comes line one-one. And we went from a four to a three, which was, should, should, should save some on insurance. And the house premiums. So that's where we called the fire department on how to get it. Tina's got a letter up there, so if anybody needs it, think about City Hall or come by the fire department. We can copy that letter. Where it shows you stay in the city of Dillon, your ISO rating now is a three instead of a four. They come by every five years to do ISO study.
Is that the same, I'm assuming the same information we get the county? Betsy, did you get a copy of that?
I read that letter and get reading the emails. I mean, they were, it was a little cumbersome how they were changing ratings and all that stuff. I said, just tell me already, we better or worse? And we're better. And that's, that's huge. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts on that. And I don't know, you know, we just live in Dillon. I mean, what is a Marion, a?
I think Marion may be a four. But I was talking to them when I saw, I talked, I talked with the guy in insurance company. He said, what they do is, and what, like your industries and stuff coming in, they look at that kind of stuff. He said, most insurance companies do it for like a one to a three, give a rate, and then a four to a six. He says, so in the city of Dillon, some of them do it individually, nine out of ten of them do like a one to three and a four to six rating as far as quoting insurance premiums. So the county, I, I think they might be a split six, ten or certain areas or whatever. But in the city limits, we're, we're a three now.
Well, we wanna go try to bring in that area out there. That might make an impact on their insurance.
It could, you know.
Well, I remember twenty-five, thirty years ago, we were probably a six.
Two thousand, two thousand and five were a six. And next state went to a four, next state went to a three.
That's all I had here.
Thank you, Glenn. Janet, finance?
General fund. My general fund on cash account, four million, four twenty-seven, seven hundred and twenty-three million dollars. In the depreciation account, we've got a million, nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then in another depreciation account, repay on that, where we purchased equipment over the years. We pay ourselves back that we didn't borrow any money. We got nine hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars saved. Total of three million, eight, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And our revenues this year, twenty-one versus twenty, we brought in five hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars versus five hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars in twenty twenty, which a difference of a thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars more in twenty-one. We, in our expenses for twenty-one, we spent eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And twenty twenty was six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. A difference of two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars more in twenty-one because we have purchased the commercial sanitation truck for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand and twenty-one dollars. And we will, when we do our loan, we will put that money back in as loan proceeds. It'll come back in. Next one is the water and sewer fund. In our non-restricted accounts, we've got a million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. In our restricted account, we've got two million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Bringing a total of all accounts to three million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, ninety-five dollars. And July twenty twenty-one, which is our new budget, we spent four, with our revenues, four hundred and six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. We brought in eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars more in twenty-one than we did in twenty twenty.
All right, let me ask you there, you know, you're talking on the state. Eighty thousand dollars in one month, or eighty-four thousand plus. And grants are out of that, right?
It's just water sewer stations.
Pretty good, what's up?
What are great things for you?
Yeah.
They weren't paying you for COVID, so you were sitting on that.
Oh, it could have been, yeah. Because July of last year, our week, I can't remember when we started back, but we kind of did some things.
Purdue shut down a day.
So that could be, yeah, that might be.
Okay.
A good point.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, our expenses in July of twenty-one, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, we spent more in twenty twenty than we did in twenty-one. Stormwater fund, we have in our cash account, fifty thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. We brought in eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars in July of twenty-one. It was a difference of fifty-eight dollars more in twenty than we did in twenty-one. Our expenses was seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars in twenty-one. It was nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars in twenty twenty. What that is, a difference of seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars in twenty-one. That's due to the mitigation plan that we're paying on, that we will get reimbursed from, on that.
That's one of the stormwater management projects. What, what have we put in it? How much, we just put the twelve thousand?
No, today, last year, this year, we have spent a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents.
And how much of that will we get back?
We will spend, end up spending two hundred and forty thousand. We'll get two hundred and forty thousand back.
Okay. So we should get all of that.
Yeah.
Makes you feel a little bit better about that fifty thousand dollar cash account if you're spending eleven thousand dollars a month.
And that grant, but since it is thousand.
That grant will close out, or that project will close out here in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
So hopefully by the first year, we'll have all our paperwork in on the grant to get our money back.
The golf course, we have sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars in the cash account. Our revenues for July of twenty-one is thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty. And twenty twenty, it was twenty thousand, three hundred and eight, which is twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars more in twenty-one. And July of thirty-one, twenty-one, we spent thirty-five thousand and fifty dollars. Last year, we spent fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. A difference of twenty-four thousand and eighty-one dollars more in twenty twenty. And that's due to pumps and stuff.
I think that was when you had to replace that pump.
That's, that's correct.
We, there is a, there is a ton of play out there right now. There was a little guy tournament that they threw together the last, they had sixty people on Saturday morning and then had something yesterday and a great participation in that. I think we had probably thirty or forty teams or so, you know, eight of them that played.
And I have sent the letter to the county requesting our feedback.
Yeah. It's, it's just, you know, it's, I mean, we, we see it every week. But when you see people that come in and have to play there a couple of years and they go, wow. Todd, they're just doing such a great job keeping that place clean. It's, it, it really does look good. I also, I, I mentioned last time about these investors that are coming from Grable. And I showed them a picture of, of what unique Dillon is, is where most places, there's a lot of golf etiquette. If you want to play ten on a hole, you can play ten on a hole in Dillon. And I showed them that picture. And they're, they're relatively young guys and they said, man, that's awesome. But, you know, we let people through, they won't, you know, come to play through. But it's a pretty unique, unique place to play golf.
Just for record, July of this year was our best month revenue wise since we took over in two thousand thirteen.
When is, when is it gonna be official?
I'm still waiting on paperwork from the attorney.
Yes, with the attorney.
We have attorney, what I was told last week.
Okay.
I did a survey and he finally got the new plat, so he's working on.
I think Robert Redd. It'd be nice, that might be a nice thing too. We're getting ready to hammer that, this man, God, you know, it'd be nice maybe even to announce it then. We made a little bit of an announcement, I don't know if you asked, but just kind of make something official. Cause he'll be there for that also.
Yeah, we got the two percent hospitality fund. We've got nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars in it. We brought in sixty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars in July of twenty-one. Last year was fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. A difference of three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars more in twenty-one than twenty twenty. And we just got four payments left on the wellness center, which is paid in January, this year.
Any idea of how long it's gonna take until we get Zaxby's back with him?
That is a big question. They started.
Yeah. They started.
We don't know what time it's at.
Just for people that don't know, Zaxby's was probably one of the highest contributors to that two percent money that we get. And they closed down and Starbucks opened. We didn't see a bump down. Actually, it's always a bump up. So hopefully when they open back up, that two percent money, that, that account will grow even more.
Right.
Yeah. Todd Davis, then the county organization.
Mayor Council is gonna be back with it. And this is the first time since I, before Hockland again, I miss it. Good things are here on the golf course, hospitality money and so forth. I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the DCA tonight. I know there's somebody back here on Zaxby's phone. Yes, they've got my set of lobbies. I called Glenn last week about putting it on the agenda. We were talking about downtown revitalization. He and I were back and forth. We tend to do that a lot, going off ideas and so forth. Then about ten minutes later, he called me or texted me back, said, Todd, go ask me for money. Glenn, that's exactly what I'm gonna do. Exactly what I'm gonna do. The last. What?
He's wrong.
I'm just right up front. Last few months, I've gone to Fort Bar City, it's on the way to Columbia. I stopped by Canyon, being in my life, went to the States, that and Lake City. So I peeled off and spent some time in Lake City, Hartsville and Merritt. And what you notice is that those downtowns, those main streets are light years ahead of us. I mean, literally light years ahead of us. So when I got back about a week or two ago, you know, my office is on the Carper Avenue. I decided to cross a train track from the depot station. So I walked to the post office most mornings. So I walked to the post office that morning. So I counted in the buildings on both sides of Main from the depot station to about where the Ag building is, on both sides. I may be off one or two buildings because some of those are split, you know. There are thirty-four I counted total. I went back, nineteen of them were empty. Fifty-six percent of our buildings on Main Street from their post office are vacant. Maybe two were being rehabbed. There was some work in a couple of them. This city council's always been progressive with ideas on what to do to make Dillon a better place to live. I mean, we were when I was there and y'all are doing it now. Y'all were the leaders, not the county, but the city, it's the city, you guys. These ideas should come from the city. They're here to help you and I hope you use them. They spend a lot of time on festivals, the South Plaza concerts and all that stuff we like going to. You got the tools, you got the roadmaps, you make Main Street better. And I'm just as guilty when I was up here not pushing Main Street vote, but I pushed it. Y'all did a lot of things well, the street department, fire department, recreation, the budget, a lot of things y'all do splendidly well. We did a lot of things together as mayor well. Now, you know, I sit at home at night or just drive in my truck thinking, what can we do to make it better? Some of the things we did together, one of the first things, when I got in office, we came to, you know, came to you guys. You remember on the Carper Avenue beside the theater, there's a building collapsing. It was some type of paint store or something. It was dragging the wall or damaging the wall of the theater. And I remember, there ain't no way we gonna have a vacant building inside Dillon County Theater. So we outworked Bob Brad, Judge Lockhami at the time. And able to put something together, create Lockhami Court. It felt a little more appealing. You can park behind the theater, walk through the nice court, go to the show or whatnot. Did the South Plaza where our concerts are held today. Got with Glenn when they was put a Christmas tree on, that program, did that. Put a pretty detailed theater production on Scrooge, the golf course, twenty thirteen, which is coming to fruition today, I hope it's real soon. Fantastic, that's one of your, your gems, the golf course, I was always behind it. Probably closed when I was coming in with the whole barbecue cook-off. Remember that? Things that bring people uptown. We did the thug fit grants, we did the facade grants. I don't know if we did it one year or two years and stopped, but we did do, started those two or three years ago. Glenn and I went to Florence, kind of copycat what they were doing, a little more on a smaller detail than they were. But copied it pretty well. Did two antique roadshows, holiday goodness. We recruited some restaurants out on, you know, a part of, recruiting some restaurants out on Rapid Door Gardens. Did a park at the Wellness Center. And we took down some buildings on Hampton Street and the old Fells Building, which really is another failure from having to go in and demolish buildings and start bridges. Now what can we do? I'm asking you to make a commitment or consider one in the best place to afford funding. The DCA is equipped to handle about anything you want them to do with downtown with you guys as oversight. You got some good people on there. I think about five or six representatives here today. All have a vested interest on Main Street. Where I'm asking tonight, where the money might can come from for you guys to make another commitment, at least two years, either through the two cent hospitality tax, which I think tourism profits can be, tourism programs can be used out of those funds. Janet told me tonight, you got about nine hundred thousand or four years left on the Wellness Center. I don't think you need more than five, six percent when you pull out of that. That's a small commitment to put on Main Street. Or Glenn has got a true representative from the American Rescue Plan. I know those monies can be used for nonprofits. I read it on their website, maybe there's some other tax you can use for that. But that's just another option that was bringing up.
Where the money can go from?
I don't know if y'all are skilled in the hunt for downtown economic development coordinator. I don't know if there really needs to be one right now because I don't know what one would be able to show from a lack of inventory on that Main Street. I know there's other things they can do. But when you bring somebody in, you gotta have sites, just the same way you can develop a good accounting. You got to show them sites to be able to plan your business. That's part one of what I was looking at. Number two, I think is just as vital, is got to start doing something with these debt paid property owners on Main Street. I'm not going to mince words about, there's just too many vacant buildings. Talking with Betsy the other day, her sister was walking downtown and she said she could smell the mold. There's two buildings that I went by, looked in the window, the mold on the floor was like carpet. That bad. It's time to take Main Street back. It weren't stolen. All those buildings are still there. They just look way worse than they used to, but they're still there. They're empty, they're falling apart. They're in for a lot of the yard, a lot of the mold or whatnot. They represent one of the biggest threats to our community. When I go into a town, I always want to see the Main Street, always. That's what I gauge, that's what I judge that town on every time I go there. Especially today, people are getting out of the urban cities and the urban areas. They want to come to the suburbs, they want to come to the small towns, they want to go out and eat on the sidewalks of Main Street. Have stuff to do. It's our biggest threat on economic development, I think. That, housing. That, housing, not our schools, they've been perception of our schools, but Main Street's in the top three. I got a general manager tomorrow coming to look at these buildings we rehabbed from Florence. And I hope he doesn't count the empty buildings that I did on the main street. That represents us, that's who we are, that's who you are, that's who our community is, is Main Street. And how it's presented and how it looks. I know the fight against apathy has kind of been lost because us here are used to it, but a stranger coming through town is not. Us being used to it is a pretty sad state of affairs. It represents us, it's our community identity, is Main Street. I don't think anything else is more, our identity, we are Main Street. None of these tenants on these old buildings are waiting for, none of these owners of these old buildings are waiting for the right tenant to come around and give them the right amount of money. That's long been gone. They'll give you every excuse in the book. I don't think any amount of incentive is gonna work for them. Y'all got to, of course, it's on books. If you don't want to play, you want to find other ideas of what other communities are doing, I got four or five examples of vacancy taxes, whatever. You've got to make these building owners, to keep their building there, more expensive in the manner that it is now, some way. There's no excuses left for them. They're holding you back, you wouldn't have a house beside it, they had mold in it, that's falling down and bringing your community, your values in your neighborhood, your community down. That's what it's doing on Main Street. You got the tools to make a difference. I think all the goodwill with these property owners has been exhausted. And you've got the tools to do it. So I'm here again tonight to make, ask, plead with you to make another commitment on these grants. We had a learning curve with those things. We had one or two that didn't go just right, I know that, but we should have quit. Like I said, you can give some of them all the money in the world and they won't do anything with those buildings. But over the next two, three, four years, if you get five, four, five, six that will do it, that's a start. We've got to start some way. Lake City had Darla Board that pumped billions in that community. We don't have that. Hartsfield has a college. Camden just has a bunch of old money. They just did a fantastic job in Camden. I'm stoked with their person a little bit on what they're doing. But Mary, you're just like the. We're more, we got better opportunities for the economic development out in industrial parks around here than Mary. But their Main Street is nice. You can go there and eat at two, three, or four restaurants, go to a coffee house. We need that, we should have that here. We should have some sort of added for people to come and invest their money and not for it to be so much risk by what's beside it. And I'm just asking you, if you can find a way, if you can give some, whatever it is, I think I can match what you give to give to them. Put them to work, let them work for you. If you want to hire a company to help correct them for it, if you don't, give them a year or two to see what they can do to revitalize some of these buildings or get these property owners to do it.
We approved, what, $60,000, $62,000 for a.
Downtown coordinator.
Downtown coordinator. And that was kind of left at Glenn's discretion, just that if it could be split off. Um, you know, and we did the grant, the update grant. We just kind of got a, we got burned, personally got burned. You know, it's a friend of mine that probably did the worst, but um, you know, if um, when you look at, as we have on those buildings, $30,000 doesn't go a very long way, you know? And that's frustrating. But I am, I think it's a great idea to be able to enforce some of this so that we can make it expensive to be vacant. And just, you know, if we could use all that fine money that we get and put it in an account and use it as a thug fit money. When it budgeted, if I remember, it was $45,000 and nothing, don't you? Uh, it was $30,000, it was $310,000.
We did $30,000.
$310,000. And then there was another facade grant that we had about $24,000. Yeah, $24,000, but that was much smaller than that. But there were three $10,000 grants and they, it was a 50-50 match. Phil, I think if you can get $55,000, $65,000 here, and where I'm talking, another match for $130,000, $150,000 for them and at their discretion, let them decide who's grants, how they go about it, that'll make the greatest impact and take politics out of it on you guys.
I think, I think that, I think you're right. They might be good people to run that through, but ultimately if it's, you know, we're gonna have to approve that.
You're the oversight.
Yeah.
Like y'all always have.
We're gonna have to.
No doubt. But they can handle applications, they can give the law the lead work on it. And the other thing which they can do, you don't get a dime until your project is completed and signed on.
Right, yeah.
And that's the only time, the serious people that I'm in want to do the work.
Right, yeah.
I appreciate your time, I hope you consider it. I'm tired going to Florence to eat, went there the other night, they were loading, had to go to Five Guys, uh, which is, I think they're getting really close. Still good.
I brought a jet in.
But people want to be able to come and get out their house, in their car, five minutes, be uptown. And that would be, it's a long way off, but we have somewhere like that. But right now, we don't even have the possibility. These graduating classes have to go out of town, but do their, you know, their part or, you know, whatever. These supper clothes, other than the Pedlar, there's good restaurants in Dillon. I'm not knocking them. I think anything that comes in, you don't have to be a Western, be a spa, or anything anybody has, they, they have a vision of doing uptown. Will lift all the others up, you know, I'm truly looking back. You can steal them for sales tax. I ate at the Pedlar last month and went there and had a 45-minute wait. And that place, it's, you know, they have to raise the cost and I paid for it. And I just talked to a guy, a good friend of mine, he says, "Well, Todd, they're coming off the interstate." Well, that's exactly right. They can come off the interstate downtown and do what they want.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Flynn from Pope Flynn Group. Just for, yeah, just the background. Lawrence and Pope Flynn Group are attorney, bonding attorneys, for lack of terminology. If you remember, Ms. Margaret Pope has been before council several times. We've now retired, correct?
Retired.
And she, they always helped us on the SRF loans, um, as far as being a bond attorney. So tonight's the first reading on the SRF loan agreement. And this is an agreement that was done by Lawrence and his. And that's the, that is the.
Hillside.
Hillside Pump Station, that where.
Million.
Million six total.
Unfortunately, it is getting more expensive than the guys I've heard you say. Glenn, thank you very much. It has been a little off since we've been back in front of council, but yes, Margaret Pope, who y'all may remember, retired at the end of December and has handed over the reins to, I'd like to say a younger one, but you know, he did it for a little while, things are starting to get ready, get on by the day. Um, but our law firm, Pope Flynn, we're in Columbia in Municipal Association Building. So if anyone's in town, feel free to pop in up on Thursday, we'd love to see them. Um, so as y'all may remember, and I don't want to go too deep because I know you have plenty of that on the agenda and I can talk through. But Constitution basically gives municipalities two different ways to borrow money. Constitution says, kind of the general fund side of your operation, you can issue general obligation debt secured by taxes up to 8% of the assessed value of all property in your community. That's not what this is. This is not debt secured by taxes. This is instead a revenue bond, which is debt secured by a source other than a tax or license. And so as y'all have been through the budget process before, you're aware, you operate kind of two separate budgets. And it sounds like three with the, with the storm water and the golf course 12. But you got the general fund, which is how you pay for all the day-to-day operations. You keep the lights on, you pay for staff salaries, you pay for police, you pay for fire. And then you also have this separate enterprise fund. And the enterprise fund is the business operations of the city. And the water and sewer system and most of those, their storm water systems and golf course and recreation facilities get booked as a business enterprise of the city. It stands outside the general fund. It's supposed to operate on its own, the water and sewer revenues that you charge your customers are supposed to support and maintain that system. And it's like any system, you've got to continue to put money back into it. And unfortunately, as Mary Bartin alluded to a second ago, sewer is getting real expensive. And we're probably gonna see it even more expensive. You alluded to some of the Harpwood money earlier. There's $350 billion that's about to hit the streets in the United States. And that money is earmarked for lots of different projects, but can also be used explicitly for water, sewer, storm water and broadband upgrades. And so there's gonna be a lot of really hungry contractors. And so if there's any benefit to borrowing money now, at least you have your cost of funds locked in. So the program that y'all have historically borrowed through is the state revolving loan fund. It's a program administered by the state, it's booked within DHEC. And basically what they use is match money from the federal government. So the federal government has two distinct programs. The Federal Clean Water Act, which funds storm or sewer improvements. Federal Drinking Water Act, which funds drinking water improvements. 80, 20 matches to the city, excuse me, the state funds 80% of it. And then create this revolving fund and they spin out cash to local governments in the state to be able to deploy these projects. And right now, they have a lot of money available to them in the clean water system. So you actually hit the market really well and they issued you an interest rate for a variety of reasons. Um, it's a small system, there are sub-demographic issues. So you're getting this money at 1%. Um, so when you think about borrowing money at 1% for up to 20 years payable over these quarterly payments, I don't want to say the money's free, but it's about as close to free money as you can otherwise get today. I don't know how long these rates are gonna.
Take it with your best, and you make money.
That's exactly right. And typically, we don't see that. You know, you look and you can anticipate, if you go and you've parked your money at the Elgip right now, you're not getting much out of the treasury rates. But at some point, over the next 20 years, rates have to go up. We can't keep just printing money like we're printing money. And you're locking in this cost of funds for the next 20 years. So as Glenn alluded to a second ago, this is for the gas station improvements along Hillside Drive. Project's already been bid, it's ready to go. And so at this point, what we have in front of you tonight is a series ordinance approving this, this project, which has been bid, the numbers are in, it's kind of locked in. Uh, the program for SRF requires you to lock those bids in, basically have your contractors ready to go and it's a drawdown loan the way that it's ultimately structured. The only other thing I would just make sure that y'all are aware of, you have historically only borrowed from the SRF. Uh, you have a 15 loan and a 17 loan. This will be the 21 loan. And I always say, at the bottom of the wire, our role is to come in, make sure this is all done legally under the Constitution and we sign an opinion to the SRF at the end of this process, that council is taking action necessary to approve the debt that is validly issued and binding and enforceable in accordance with its terms. Which basically means you're not putting a lien on the sewer plant, you're not putting a lien on the lines, you're putting it in the ground. You're making a promise that you will raise rates to a level sufficient to continue to maintain the operations of the system and pay this debt back.
Is there, is there a percentage or more full of revenues that we cap at?
So, so there is. There's kind of this, this threshold percentage and there's two of them that we utilize. So the SRF says they want to see coverage of a 1.1x. Your master bond ordinance, which is the document that you previously approved in fact in 2015, because we issue bonds on a parity basis, I'll just add that a second, requires a 1.2x coverage. And the way that you set that up, and the simple math of it is the way I like to think of it. Assume your utility system generates $5 million a year. Right about that, so $5 million a year in revenues. And so that's all revenue you generate from charging water, sewer rates to your customers across the system. But it also costs you $3.8 million to run it. So chemical costs and the, you know, the cost of maintaining the plant and your operators and all of those things mix up. So you take your gross revenues of $5 million, back down to $3.8 million of operating revenues. You get net revenues or net, you know, whatever is available to surplus of $1.2 million. The way your documents are set up is you have to maintain your rates at a level such that if you have debt service and you're paying on the bonds, the bonds can't exceed a million dollars a year. So you have $1.2 million worth of net revenues and your bond payments can't exceed a million dollars a year. Now, those numbers are a little bit off, that's not exactly where you are, but that's where we are. And so with the 15 bonds and the 17 bonds and now layering on these bonds, we still feel fairly comfortable that y'all could do that because you remember, the larger loan that you retired a few years ago, your aggregate debt service was higher than that today. So we feel fairly comfortable, the SRF feels comfortable from a credit worthy in a standpoint, that you can afford it, that you can pay it back. Um, and the good news here is that it's already committed. And so the next action that we have, assuming council feels comfortable to do so, is what we have in front of you tonight is a series ordinance. And it just comes up a little later on agenda, that y'all will approve. This will be first reading tonight. It approves a loan agreement, which then conforms to the terms of your master bond ordinance and the series ordinance. And it'll be built in as a series of bonds under your master bond ordinance. And obviously after second reading, we'll schedule a closing, come back. The authorization tonight is to allow the mayor pro temp to sign on behalf of council, have the court of treachery executed as well. And about somewhere in the next five to six weeks, we'll have this, assuming two approvals tonight and a second reading. We'll likely pick up and get closed and get you money.
Well, my, my only concern is, is that, and I talked with Glenn a little bit about this earlier, is we really need to start on that project of expanding our sewer treatment plant. And, you know, I'm sure that's gonna be like $20 million, $25 million.
Double that.
Yeah. A lot of the money.
And, and you know, unfortunately, that's what we see kind of across the state because we do this work everywhere. I get to travel all over the great state of South Carolina. And treatment facilities are getting more expensive every single day. This is, this is the kind of hidden stuff that you don't recognize. The pump station, you know, the way the sewer flows, you gotta get in the air in order to gravity feed it where it needs to go. When you live in an area that's real flat, you're gonna have more pump stations that need to be replaced. You're gonna have lines that you don't know how long they've been around and how long they've been there. So these are things that are gonna continue to happen. But at the end of the day, you start talking about how you build growth, how you keep that facility operational, and you're, you're treating a slum. And it's not exactly a pretty process. And it's going to continue to diminish and it's gonna need capital. And when you start talking about expansion, yeah, those numbers are astronomical places.
Any questions? And this will be brought up under new business ordinance, number 21.
Thank y'all for having me, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Um, citizens report. If I want to talk. Uh, we'll move on, there's no old business, let's look at new business ordinance, 21-11. Let's do the resolution 1621 first, so I won't miss it.
No, you have to get to the end of it.
Oh, I got it?
Yes.
So those are, that's last?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make sure you're on.
All right. Ordinance number 21-11, annexation, 1600 block, Commerce Drive. Is it, this is our area?
No, sir, this would be Trinity Behavioral, that is. No, I'm sorry, this is, this is the property that we've bought, that's between us and Trinity Behavioral and the property extends 40 acres behind us. We purchased from Matty to begin.
Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna get a motion.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, ordinance number 2112, annexation of Trinity Behavioral Care, 1719 Commerce Drive. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor? Uh, ordinance 21-13, SRF one, that's what we just heard about, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 1621, you give us. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
This is a resolution, as I mentioned earlier, that's been recommended by the Business Association where I am named as the designated representation for the American Rescue Plan Act. Act, which provides me to direct to all things necessary, including, without limitation, to sign documents, make certification, make regular reports to council, and otherwise act on behalf of the municipality to receive and expend, expend the funds pursuant to their appropriation by council in the eighth RPA rule. And then Janet is listed as the contact person.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Um, Jim, have a number report.
Couple of things I have on the, just sort of want to reiterate what my prior mayor was saying. I had a few conversations about other big grants. I like the thought that we obviously could dry in some of the, drop, dry in some of these buildings downtown, and then we could assist in somehow a way of doing that. Now, what was mentioned about paying for them on the back end, obviously, is the best idea I've heard at the time, and that will probably safeguard us from the statements we had in the past. Though I think that's a excellent idea, I sure do. Now, what we said about, we have the council, obviously, but if we had buildings, if we had a few condemned, eight, seven, I mean, they're, they're in pretty bad shape, and they needed a roof, but we could just dry them in, obviously, something could be done with the building. That could be our start, if none of them need to be torn down after we got them repaired. Now, getting that evaluated, Glenn, is a key part of the whole process, trying to see if they are able to be safe or not, and trying to make a determination how many buildings we do have downtown at the present that need to be removed. Now, like you were speaking before, beside the theater, we got a nice space there that we put some in, that's complementing the town, and that would need to be done, and any empty spaces we have, obviously, downtown. But I don't think we should do any of the grants unless they're paid on the back end.
I, 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 I mean, we, we, we got bar.
Agree. Yeah. But I think it has a lot to do with tourism, I think. Those funds could be a possibility.
But you, but you give money to dry in a condemned building that still sits there as the owner's not doing anything else.
Well, then, like I was, like I've mentioned over the past few years, if we can't do something in the domain for public use, then I don't understand the whole process, because that's the whole point in the domain, is taking over public use. If someone's like to take care of a building, we need to just take them. And I don't know what the rest of you feel like, DCA, the edge mayor, or whoever, but we have to be proactive downtown. I mean, I grew up in this town with the, the whitest streets you ever can imagine. And we did have, we were proud of it at one time. Now, we have shrunk the complexity of that, but to no avail. I don't know if that had anything to do with the demise of downtown, which I'm obviously a bit, but in what we have downtown in the present, we cannot make that. Now, are we going to get together with, with DCA and council members to try to figure this out? Obviously, we won't. And I think it's very, very important we do it as soon as possible, because if not, we're going to lose some extra buildings. Now, you're saying that what's got mold on the floor, if it's dried in, obviously, the building could be used. I'm saying if it can, it needs to come back. And that would need to be evaluated.
Well, just, I know you've been to Charleston, and a lot of times, all they leave is the brick, and the, you know, just so that they have the look, and then they go in and shell behind that, they're, they're...
They'll leave the facade and the rest of the stuff.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, because it keeps...
Totally new inside, but just leave the facade.
Yeah.
And I think what Dr. Wallace is saying is, you're putting a building inside.
Correct.
Yeah. But it keeps the visual aspect, it's easier to bring a building in, to obviously build and remove than not. And like I, like he was saying, I've seen it in Greve or Charleston, it's a big city, we obviously can do it here. But anyway, moving on, I'm going to skip over Maple Slum, I talked about that in our last meeting. Did you find anything we can do to get our pressure out of Maple Slum?
No. Again, that was, that was under...
I don't know what's going to come with our research, but if, if we have to go to some type of pacing in this town to alleviate our flooding process, I mean, dealing with like a, like a cereal bowl, watering it with no place to go, and it's getting worse in our lifetime. Those that have been here their life, you'd have to admit that I work across a lot of works today to handle it. Do we have a schedule to do stormwater, where we go to each opening, you review?
Not really a schedule, but you know, we, you know, we do.
Could we, could we go up to some type of schedule where we could go to each street in its own?
I mean, I pretty much do that myself, and I, you know, I'm out, I ride, I just got to get out, check, then that's when I schedule, you know, guys come back. But yeah, we can.
I'd like to see that done. That's all I have.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
We ain't down there grinding stuff. They got, they got that money, so the grants is out for him now, right? They all got to get cleaned out. We have to go and do it?
Either we do it, or he does it.
Or he will do it.
And as far as we need to say clean, you're talking about the undergrowth and things like that.
Yeah. But then do you tear stuff out?
I think so.
But we can't do it, we have to hire someone to do that. I don't have any time. Can you? Doug, you don't have any?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, can I get a motion then to go, let it go to executive session?
Executive session, yeah.
Thank you all.